Recording in progress.
Good evening. It is Tuesday, October 7th, and we've got the City Council meeting in the city of Louisville, Colorado. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahy.
Here.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
If you would join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item tonight is an executive session concerning pending litigation of real property acquisitions and disposition, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to introduce the item and the request.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, the city attorney and the city manager are requesting an executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation pursuant to Section 5-2D of the city's Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024B, and discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions pursuant to Section 5-2C of the Home Rule Charter and CRS Section 2464024A, specifically as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy. Prior to entertaining any motion, the interim city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business in meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes, or to make any final decisions. It is the duty of each member to ensure that executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature, or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session in return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows: One, where federal or state law requires that the information being discussed remain confidential. Two, certain personnel matters involving only city employees directly employed by the council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Three, consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates, and strategy. Four, legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, Section 5-2D of the charter authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024B of the Colorado Revised Statutes. Section 5-2C of the charter authorizes an executive session for the purpose of discussing real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals and other estimates of value and strategy. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, Section 2464024A of the Colorado Revised Statutes. The request this evening involves pending litigation regarding the Marshall Fire and a potential disposition of real property. With that, Mayor, you may entertain a motion.
Thank you. I move to go into executive session with the purpose of discussing pending litigation and real property acquisitions and dispositions, and that the executive session also includes city manager Diana Langley, Deputy City Manager, Samma Fox, Community Development Director, Rob Zaccaria, city attorney Kathleen Kelly, and attorneys from the law firms of Baron &amp; Bud and Diab Chambers. Can we get a roll call?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Samma is on vacation.
Okay, so we strike her name from the list. Do I make that motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, we need a...
Yeah, we need a roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and we will adjourn to executive session. We will be back no earlier than six for the regular meeting, and thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening. We are back in City Council meeting October 7, 2025. Our first item is to get a report on our executive session from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as noted on the meeting agenda, the executive session was for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and potential real property disposition, and the City Council had such discussion. In follow-up to the executive session, request that City Council direct city staff to negotiate a potential sale of property with a contract to be placed on a future council agenda. So moved would suffice.
Thank you.
So moved.
So moved. Second? All in favor?
Second.
Are you second? Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the approval agenda, before I do that... Before moving on to the regular agenda, thank you very much to all of you who have been waiting for us to finish the executive session. I can report that our time was well spent, but yours was too, and thanks for waiting for us, both you and those who are on Zoom. All right, so can I get a move or a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next part of the meeting is on public comments. Please tell us your name, and if you are a Lewisville resident, when you get to the podium, make sure you fill out a card if you want to come to the podium to make a public comment. Each speaker is limited to three minutes or six minutes if you are pooling time with another person who is in attendance either at the meeting, in the chambers, or online that you've got an agreement on. All opinions are welcome. Please be respectful of each speaker to ensure everyone feels welcome to share their comments. Please refrain from any cheering, clapping, booing, or otherwise disruptive behavior. So with that, let's begin. The only other thing I would say about that is just remember that this is public comments on items not on the agenda. You know, get a head start on items that are on the agenda, and also items on the consent agenda if you have some comments on that. So who's first? We don't have any public comment? All right. So we have a motion with respect to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Council informational comments and committee reports. Council members have informational items or reports on committee work that they have done that is maybe the subject of recent meetings. Okay? Seeing none, city manager's report.
I have one thing to report. So the Lewisville Fire Protection District is having a fire chief candidate meet and greet on Monday, October 13, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Fire Station 1. They have three candidates that have made it to the final cut, and, you know, Chief Wilson is retiring in December. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. All right, on to regular business. Our first item tonight is council position on ballot questions number 300 and 301 that are on the November 4, 2021 ballot in Lewisville. 2025, excuse me, not '21. The first is Resolution 79, Series 2025, a resolution opposing City of Council Ballot Question 300 concerning a citizen-initiated ordinance regarding residential zoning. Second is Resolution 80, Series 2025, a resolution opposing City of Lewisville Ballot Question 301 concerning a citizen-initiated ordinance regarding impact fees. Does the staff have any report at this time? Okay. Are there initial... Since we don't have a staff report, probably don't need any council questions. So again, public comment rules are the same. If anybody has a public comment, please fill out a card and give it to the clerk at the end of their dais, and call your name, and we'll go forward from there. Do we have folks who want to do public comment on either or both of these resolutions?
Andy Johnson?
My name's Andy Johnson. I live in Lewisville. I'm also a business owner and architect in Lewisville. I'll be pooling my time with my wife, Michelle Friesewick-Johnson. She's in the front row, however, three minutes should be sufficient. I stand before you tonight, not just as a 26-year resident, but as an architect who has dedicated my career to understanding the difference between responsible growth and obstruction. I am here in clear opposition to measures 300 and 301, and more broadly, to the culture of stagnation they represent. The citizen-initiated ballot measure is a powerful democratic tool designed to bypass an unresponsive legislature. It is fundamentally not a tool designed to bypass professional expertise, rigorous public discourse, or established accountability. The premise of these measures is highly problematic. Measure 300, while framed as an affordable housing solution, is functionally unsustainable for a healthy housing market. It creates a mathematically unworkable and inflexible housing quota that... Housing quota that numerous affordable housing experts agree is designed to deter new residential construction. Measure 301 is based on the false assumption that developers aren't paying their own way. In reality, Lewisville's permit, tap, impact fees, and use taxes already rival the highest development fees in the entire region. To be precise, a single-family home can incur $120,000 to $140,000 in fees before construction even begins. These high fees are a significant factor contributing to our lack of affordability. These ballot measures are not genuine attempts at policy reform. They are simply obstructionist instruments designed to slow or stop development. For too long, public input in this city has been dominated by the philosophy of "not in my backyard." The creators of these measures are part of a small vocal group whose clear intent is to limit growth by shifting their focus from one objection to the next: parking, height limits, density, and even petty landscape setbacks. I frequently attend these meetings. This year, we engaged in detailed public debates on the comprehensive plan, inclusionary housing, ADUs, the updated energy codes and building codes. The very proponents of these initiatives were conspicuously absent from those rigorous, open, public forums. They have attempted to circumvent the open democratic process because they were unwilling to engage in the necessary debate there. These ballot measures represent a blatant disregard for due process and open discussion. Our community has been misled by a group that choose... chose to bypass the transparent settings designed for litigating these complex issues. While I don't think I need to, I urge council to vote no on 300 and 301, and I urge you to send an equally strong message. Lewisville needs to move beyond a philosophy of fear and obstruction. Progress requires effort, debate, and compromise. Stagnation is the real threat to our community's future. Let's focus our energy not stopping development, but on building community. We have the creative capacity to embrace multi-use development strategies that integrate living and work, allowing us to transcend the limitations of segregated, single-family housing neighborhoods. This is the path to a healthier, more vibrant, and truly modern Lewisville. Thank you.
Thank you, Eddie.
Lisa Ritchie. Thank you, members of City Council. A pleasure to be here tonight. I really want to thank you for taking public comment on these two ballot initiatives, and I'm so pleased to see that you all have individually taken a position against these measures, and I think it's also very powerful that you're considering sending a collective message, which I hope is a unanimous vote, opposing these efforts. Andy, I think, covered in pretty great detail the technical reasons why these measures are wrong for our city, but I'm hopeful that beyond the opposition of these measures, this council will continue to proactively work to allow and champion housing throughout our city. The draft comprehensive plan is going in the right direction. These ballot measures directly would undermine the good work that you all have been doing. We need to have these housing-supported policies that counteract years of exclusion and obstacles to change. We need to continue to push for these changes, and you all need to continue to lead on this issue. I'm extremely opposed to these measures. Some people are concerned that the character of our community will change if we allow the zoning of property to change, and I'm a professional planner, and I would argue that zoning is an ineffective and hollow way to describe our community character. Even worse is that zoning has historically been used to exclude certain people from our communities. Is it our collective community character that we would choose not to create places for our young adults to return to Lewisville? Is it our collective community character that the answer to folks aging must leave Lewisville to find opportunities to downsize? If we are to rely on zoning for our character, then let's allow our zoning to reflect the best of us. There are many reasons to oppose these measures, and I hope that, council, this is just an early action to continue the good direction you all are going. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right. Back to council. And I think it may be good to take a little discussion if folks have comments, but wanted to find out whether they do. Yes? Councilmember Heftner.
Just want to offer my thanks to the drafters of the resolutions for certainly capturing my thoughts on these two ballot initiatives. I share nearly exactly the sentiment that Lisa Ritchie just shared with us and happy to see it put down in writing in the resolutions that I hope we'll adopt.
Other comments? Okay. I have a few comments to make, just a few. One is, from a governance perspective, I don't like these measures because they really pry from us as council members and frankly, from professional staff to, on both of them, the discretion to obtain information from a credible professional staff, an incredible community that comes together on nights like tonight to provide their opinions, and folks who are still willing to invest and help us to become the community that I think we can be. And I think that's a very corrosive trend. I also think that if, in the long run, people really want to wrest control of land use matters from the list of powers that council has, and I think that that is a piece of this, then the answer isn't an initiative. The answer is a charter amendment to take and make changes to our form of government. I also think that our, in particular, when we're talking about the impact fee issue, our staff is capable of doing the work that needs to be done on impact fees. We are in the process already of changing or evaluating and coming to conclusions on what should be in and out of the impact fee list. As Andy Johnson mentioned before, there are so many ways in which developers and their consumers, it is not just the developers. Those costs get passed on to those who are going to be here. And you can't forget about that. It's not a matter of just dumping on developers. These are the people who help facilitate the deals, but ultimately, it's you and me and others who end up paying for it. But the city staff is well capable of the work necessary to bring information on the ground without having the kind of incredibly prescriptive measure that this initiative is. I think the other thing is that things like open space, we have a tax for open space. That's what it's for. Everybody pays it. And, you know, there's individual components of the list that just don't make sense. Likewise, we don't have any idea what this board that's described in the initiative is about. We don't know who they're supposed to be, what happens if there's conflict between those people and our staff. It's just a lot of unproductive and bad public policy built into that. In my view, the resolutions do a good job of describing the measure concerning housing and the 30% limitation. This is a measure that's directly aimed at and will have the second-order consequence of stopping the building of housing and the building of affordable housing. It's designated affordable housing measure. That's how it's being sold, and that's absolutely not correct. And that's why you have so many people from this community who have signed on in opposition to it, so many groups throughout the whole community, businesses and individuals, former council members, current council members, citizens, and those who advocate for, you know, zero AMI to 60 AMI, all of them saying that this measure is a bad idea. And there's a reason for that. And I think we've set that forth, so I don't want to take any more time. But I think Lewisville is a better community for doing the things that we are doing right now. And I was interested in Lisa Ritchie's comment just a minute ago about having zoning bring out the best in us and the most flexible kinds of future that we need in order to thrive in this community. I ran for mayor two years ago, and I can tell you how many times people said, "Your job is to protect my housing value and to increase my housing value and to keep people from coming to Lewisville and to not allow them to move up the ladder of coming here, getting a better house, moving on," zero. Nobody said that. And we're going to kill our chances of having businesses be able to sell siting decisions because we just don't have housing for people. And I'll say one final thing. Advent Health Vista Hospital has come out in opposition to this, and I appreciate that. But think about this. This measure is for people in Lewisville as well as people outside of Lewisville. It's for people in Lewisville because there are a lot of people here who want their kids to be able to afford being here without being double-income, no kids, and 40 years old before they start a family and afford something. Or they want to have their parents or grandparents to be able to stay in Lewisville without having to move out because they are on a fixed income and have a hard time with the taxes. These things are for us. And in addition to being for people who are not here and want to be here, where that businesses, we need to thrive, want to, and are able to promise to their employees that they're going to have a place close. And with special respect to folks like nurses, my understated teachers, but I'm going to stick with nurses for just a second. We have a lot of nurses who live here. We have a lot of nurses who work at the single-most, largest employer in town, which is the hospital. We're going to get another hospital, thankfully. That's going to be a big hospital. It's really wonderful that we're doing that. It's going to be more employment. And if these measures pass, we're telling those teachers and others, but in this case, the nurses there, "Yeah, you work hard. Yeah, you're trying to bite off a piece of the American dream and you love Lewisville, but we don't have room for you, and we don't really care that you have to drive another hour to Aurora or wherever else in order to do your job. And yeah, you work long hours, you have big shift, tough luck." And we're saying that to a whole group of people. So, I'm pretty wound up about this issue because it's really important to the city. And so, we'll move on, but I wanted to say my piece on this because I think it's really important for me, both as a member of the community myself and a brother of a nurse, as well as someone who's serving as mayor by your, and I'm privileged to serve in that position. So, we have a motion. Unless somebody else has something to add, I'm glad to...
I'll move.
Councilmember Cooperman, then councilmember Kern, and councilmember Fahey.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a few comments. First, I also want to say I'm very pleased with how the resolutions came out, and I wanted to thank staff for taking into account all of our feedback. I'm going to add a few comments about each ballot measure. So, regarding 300, you know, I have been advocating for more affordable housing in the city since before I was on council, but this ballot measure is not a way to achieve more affordable housing. Now, we have signed on to a goal to create 12% of all units being affordable throughout the county by 2035. And if we just added units here in Lewisville to reach 12%, that would be 900 more units or so. I don't see how we could achieve that if this ballot measure passes. I also don't really see how we could achieve that without building housing in some of those locations that are referenced in the ballot measure. So, you know, what I will try to do, I think, as a first step, is in our comprehensive plan, I would really like us to have a strong statement about creating more affordable housing in the city and then working towards that goal. I'm particularly concerned about, or one of my particular concerns about this ballot measure has to do with being a city council member and the fact that we swore to uphold local and state laws and federal laws. No one has mentioned it before, but it seems very likely that this ballot measure violates state law, or two different state laws. And so, as a council member, having sworn to uphold those laws, that is just another reason, I think, to oppose it. Regarding the other ballot measure, 301, you know, development in the city certainly has impacts, but it also brings benefits. And I would hope that when we set impact fees, right, we are coming to some kind of compromise between the impacts of development and the benefits that it brings. And, you know, I would assume, I'm no expert, that doing a study and setting impact fees is a way to achieve that kind of balance. And part of that balance is figuring out, you know, what the categories should be. So, I'm quite concerned that this sets out categories beforehand without having done a study to know whether or not it actually makes sense or is legally reasonable to charge impact fees for those categories. You know, on the other hand, I'm also very happy, when we do a study next year, to look into the categories that are enumerated in this ballot measure and see if there is any validity to considering them. So, yeah, so I'm in opposition to both of the ballot measures, and I look forward to voting on these resolutions. Thank you.
I move that we pass Resolution 79, a resolution opposing City of Lewisville Ballot Question 300 concerning a citizen-initiated ordinance regarding residential zoning, and that we move to pass Resolution 80, Series 2025, a resolution opposing the City of Lewisville Ballot Question 301 concerning a citizen-initiated ordinance regarding impact fees.
Second.
Why don't we take them one at a time?
Okay.
Aye.
We take the first one, and if there's a second, is there any discussion on either one or on that one?
I'd ask for a vote on the original motion, please.
Do we do them together?
I believe it was made and seconded.
Any further discussion on it? I don't have any trouble with that. I just am trying to make it clean on both of them. But that's fine. Any other discussion? All right. Then, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Right, the next item is Vista Adventist Hospital. There's two ordinances at issue, ordinance number 1901, Series 2025, and ordinance approving ConocoPhillips Campus GDP Amendment Number 1, first reading, set public hearing, and ordinance number 1905, Series 2025, and ordinance approving Vista Adventist Hospital GDP Amendment Number 2, first reading, set public hearing. We're not going to be taking public comment on this because it's just a first reading, but we'll first hear the staff presentation and ask any questions that we might have.
All right, good evening, Mayor Lay, members of the city council. I'm Rob Zuccaro, Community Development Director for the city. I'll be making the staff presentation. So, there is a lot of details in this. I know we'll go over this in the second reading hearing as well, but I'll try to get through it fairly quickly. But I want to make sure council understands because it is a little bit complex as well. But what we have are two GDP amendments, as the mayor mentioned, that we're processing simultaneously. The owner of the properties is Porter Care Adventist Health Systems. So, they own the Vista Adventist Hospital General Development Plan, which is in red on this map, and they also have purchased a 40-acre property in Redtail Ridge, which is part of the ConocoPhillips Campus General Development Plan. So, I think, as you all know, their intent is to build a new hospital campus within Redtail Ridge, within that 40-acre parcel. So, all of these GDP amendments are related to their development plans, related to that. The first thing is, and I'm going to go into more detail in each of the main parts of the proposal, but the first thing is to amend each of the GDPs, first to decrease the maximum development cap within the Vista Adventist Hospital General Development Plan, and then increase the cap within ConocoPhillips, but limited to their 40-acre parcel. So, the additional development couldn't be anywhere within Redtail Ridge. It could only be within their parcel. And the idea is kind of a swap of development cap between the two. There is a slight increase net between the two, but I'll get into that. The proposal also includes establishing maximum building height as well as architectural design and massing standards for the 40-acre parcel within Redtail Ridge. Again, the proposed standards would only apply to that parcel. It wouldn't apply to any of the other development within Redtail Ridge. And then, also, they are proposing to dedicate about a 7.5-acre open space parcel that is on the north side of the Vista Adventist Hospital campus. So, to get it into the details of the change in the maximum development cap. So, for the Vista Adventist Hospital General Development Plan, the proposal is to cap the maximum development at what exists there today. So, the general development plan now has a 750,000-square-foot cap on development within that general development plan area. They have built a little under 400,000 square feet of development. So, they're proposing to cap it, which means that there's an additional 351,306 feet of development that they haven't taken advantage of yet. So, they're proposing to cap that. Simultaneously, they want to add 364,400 square feet of additional allowed development within their parcel within Redtail Ridge. So, this takes the total development cap within Redtail Ridge from about 2.5 million to about 2.9 million total square feet for all of the development within Redtail Ridge. This is a net increase of about 13,000 square feet of additional development. So, the purpose of this swap is in working with the hospital and understanding some of the concerns that were raised with Redtail Ridge, as well as ensuring that we have adequate, you know, city infrastructure capacity, specifically for water and sewer. That's how this concept of the swap came about. So, by generally having, you know, no increase or a very small increase in overall development, it limits any potential traffic impacts that could come from the ultimate development that would take place within this general area of the Vista Adventist Hospital campus and Redtail Ridge. So, knowing that traffic's a concern, we're building out transportation infrastructure with the development. This would generally limit the impact. We also looked at water and sewer infrastructure, so this would also help ensure we have adequate... We also looked at water and sewer infrastructure, so this would also help ensure we have adequate infrastructure for that as well. They are also proposing, as I mentioned, building height allowances within their parcel on Redtail Ridge. They're proposing three different zones. So there's a five-story, a four-story, and a three-story height zone with different allowed building heights associated, you know, with each of those zones, and it includes to the height of the building, to the parapet, as well as to the height of any mechanical screens. And so that's all laid out in the slide here. Happy to answer any questions about that. I do want to mention that the applicant has provided a heightened massing study that was in the packet at the second reading. They will go into quite a bit of detail in their presentation about the height proposal as well. They are also proposing massing and architectural standards to ensure that there's appropriate architecture and interest in the building and that any massing of those taller building elements will be moderated with those architectural standards. So they're proposing that any building element above 45 feet have a step back of 15 feet. They're limiting the building footprint above 45 feet to 50% of the base building footprint. So those taller stories would be a much smaller part of the total building massing of the overall building. There are allowances for architectural projections and other, what they're calling defining architectural elements, but those also have requirements for depth variations to add to that architectural interest. And then at the rooftop enclosures, there is another 10-foot step back. So you end up having a lot of articulation and step backs to moderate any potential visual impacts of a larger building. I would note also that the hospital parcel is located at the lowest elevation of Redtail Ridge. They're also in the vicinity of much more intense development across Northwest Parkway on the east side in Broomfield. That development allows some quite tall buildings, and there are at least a couple of buildings that are up to five stories within that development as well. So contextually, what they're proposing would be in line with what's in the vicinity. They are proposing to dedicate a seven-and-a-half-acre parcel on the north side of the existing hospital campus. This is adjacent to an existing 10-acre open space parcel that was previously dedicated to the city as part of a previous annexation agreement. So this would create a 17-and-a-half-acre open space parcel altogether. This came about because they're limiting the development potential on the property and also because this is part of a parcel that is designated by OSAB as a high priority for acquisition. So knowing this, staff did approach the hospital and ask if there was a potential to donate a portion of this parcel, and they have agreed to donate a seven-and-a-half-acre portion. The overall parcel, overall parcel that's designated by OSAB is about 15 acres, so this is half of that parcel that OSAB has designated. I do want to note that this is not part of meeting a code requirement for public land dedications that you sometimes see when subdivision plaits come through or when you have planned unit developments come through. We have different code provisions. Again, this is donations. It's not intended to meet any of our ordinance requirements for open space. We did take this to the Open Space Advisory Board, which is required by city code. Anytime there's a public land dedication, for them to review it. They did vote unanimously to recommend approval of acquisition of the open space parcel. They did include in their resolution just asking for further discussion before the city council hearing, so on if there's any potential to extend that open space further beyond the seven-and-a-half acres. The hospital, I forgot to mention this, but the hospital is also asking that that seven-and-a-half-acre donated parcel, that there be really limited development. There would be no trails, trailheads, or other amenities. They are not interested in having promoted public use within that section of the parcel, but OSAB asks that there be future discussions before the second reading hearing. So staff does intend to have a meeting and have further discussions to meet the intent of OSAB's recommendation before second reading. Part of the proposal on the Avista Hospital Campus as well is to amend the setbacks. So the existing general development plan on the north side, and I know you can't read this, but it's just, I think you can kind of see just the highlighted areas, but on the north side, there is a 50-foot setback for one- and two-story buildings, and a 100-foot setback for three-story buildings, and then a 75-foot setback on the northwest side for any building. So that's what's in the current GDP. And so that's to provide further buffer from the open space, as well as the residential Coal Creek neighborhood to the north. With the dedication of the seven-and-a-half acres, they are asking that those setbacks be reduced to five feet for parking lot and drive aisles, and 20 feet for buildings. So I think you can see in this graphic, however, that the overall setback from the residential neighborhood to the north would be increased significantly, but this would still provide flexibility for future development on the property. I would also mention that even though there's a development cap that matches the existing development on the current campus, it doesn't prohibit them from potentially redeveloping. So if they were to tear down structures, they could rebuild back up to that cap. So there would be potential to locate new buildings within these areas, you know, if another building was demolished for redevelopment opportunity. So we do have staff analysis included in the staff report. We have looked at the standards for the planned community zone district, which both of these properties fall within. We have noted from the staff analysis that the proposed amendments are consistent with the purpose of the planned community zone district. It establishes design standards to address building massing and architectural design. It's consistent with the building heights, as I mentioned, in the vicinity in Broomfield. It's also consistent with building heights previously approved when ConocoPhillips was planning their research campus on the property. They did have buildings up to 95 feet in height and several buildings at 65 feet in height that were approved with the preliminary PUD. We have taken steps to ensure there's adequate city utility services and the limited traffic impacts, and this does increase building buffers and setbacks from the residential neighborhood. So the purpose of the general development, the purpose of general development plans and the planned community zone district is to create master development concepts and plans, and so this is falling in line with that. We are looking at the comprehensive plan, policies that are relevant to this. Staff is recommending findings that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the purpose and intent of the planned community zone district. Here's some information on the comprehensive plan. Both of these properties fall within what we call the Phillips 66 Rural Special District. It does note that building heights above three stories could be appropriate if buildings are clustered and they're buffered from view corridors. And staff notes that with the Redtail Ridge development, there was a substantial open space and public land dedication along the west and north sides of the development, which has resulted in clustering of the development to the south and the east. There's also a large open space buffer outside of the city in Broomfield that can't be developed between the highway and the hospital parcel. So there is a lot of open space buffering around the development, and it is consistent in staff's view with the comprehensive plan. There is a traffic analysis included within the packet. We are recommending a condition that when they come in for planned unit development approval for the hospital campus development plan, that there be further analysis. There may be a need for a development agreement at that point. There may be some additional traffic improvements that are needed at that time. So we just want to make sure there's a condition. We're recommending a condition that that gets addressed at that time. But we did want to look at the traffic analysis, even though there's a, you know, only a small increase in overall net allowed development with the development swap. You know, there is a shift in where the traffic would be moving within the two areas, so it's still important to study the traffic and make sure the infrastructure is in place. We did look at wastewater infrastructure specifically. We wanted to make sure that the sewer lift station, if you remember that, that is being constructed in Redtail Ridge, has adequate capacity as constructed because all of this infrastructure is under construction now, and our Public Works and Utility staff have reviewed that and have found that all of the infrastructure that's being installed for Redtail Ridge right now for water and sewer is adequate with the development swap. Planning Commission held a hearing on September 25. They voted unanimously to recommend approval. They also had a separate motion to echo OSAB that they've asked for further discussions before the hearing. These aren't conditions that have to be met for their approval, but they do want further discussions, which we will plan to have, about trail access and the open space parcel. So staff is recommending approval of both ordinances and recommending approval on first reading. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Any questions? Yes, councilmember Hamilton, and then councilmember Cooperman.
Thank you. On page 5 of 15 of the packet, there's something called Spicer Residences. Can you clarify what those are or mean? So it talks about existing GDP note, proposed GDB note, and I'm not clear exactly what those are.
Give me just a minute here to find the full packet. Do you happen to know what page it is within the linked packet? I am not finding the full packet here.
So the full packet wasn't uploaded because I think it was too big. So this particular agenda item, it says page, oh, I lost it now. What did I say? Five of 15. Under Figure 1, there's two GDB notes, the existing and the proposed.
Oh, okay. So I believe the Spicer Residence is, let me get up to the map here. So there is a note on the GDP that talks about the existing development within the Avista Adventist Hospital Campus, and you can see this little square here. There's a former residence, I believe is what that is referring to, in this little square here that is actually owned by the hospital, and I believe it is being used for storage of equipment and so forth right now.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, a few questions. I'm curious, is there any precedent for this kind of swap within the city?
No, I think this, again, this was something where we, you know, staff worked with the applicant on, again, trying to address what we thought might be concerns about traffic and utilities and kind of came up with a solution to create that type of, again, it's not a formal swap or density transfer. It's simply reducing one and the development cap and increasing on another in order to kind of achieve that neutrality.
Right, okay. And then I'm curious, you know, the Avista campus, right, isn't just home to Avista Hospital, right? There's also the Centennial Peaks Hospital. I just assume that everyone is amenable to this.
Right, so my understanding is, you know, Porter Care Adventist Health Systems owns all of the land, and they have long-term leases on some of those properties. So as the property owner, they can authorize this application.
Okay, good. And then I'm curious, so the additional square footage in Redtail Ridge is specifically for that lot, right?
Correct.
So then the two-and-a-half million or so square feet that was approved for all of the whole site, it's just a matter, is there anything that determines how much of that can be used on that particular lot, or is that sort of up to the people who are developing the site?
Right, right. So, yeah, that's a good question. So the hospital is, when they acquired the property, they acquired a certain amount of development rights from Redtail Ridge out of that two-and-a-half million. So this would add to that, and I think at the second reading presentation, they could get into detail on what they've acquired and what the total increase is for their development rights with, if this is approved, plus what they've acquired from Redtail Ridge.
Okay, that's fine. And then one other little related question. I remember from, or I think I remember from discussions about Redtail Ridge, that there's a floor-area ratio limit in the Phillips 66 Rural Special District. Does that come into play here, or are there any issues with that in terms of?
Yeah, so that, this would still be within the overall floor-area ratio limit of the comprehensive plan. I didn't include that in the staff analysis of the comprehensive plan, but I will include that for second reading.
Okay, that's fine. And then I guess just two little questions. The, so the new setbacks for the Avista Campus, are those more or less decided to sort of be consistent with where the buildings will be and where that new open space would be, or is it, is there some other reasoning behind those setbacks?
Right, so I think with the donation of the open space parcel, it would limit where they could develop compared to their current entitlements. So in discussions with the applicant, having a five-foot setback for parking and drive aisles and a 20-foot building setback, it would provide flexibility for future development potential, but it would still be more restrictive than the current condition, and it would still allow access, for example, for building maintenance and those types of things.
Okay. And just my last question, are there any official trails on the open space adjacent to the neighborhood currently?
No.
No, okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right. Please.
I move that we pass, excuse me, I move that ordinance number 1904, Series 2025, passed in the first reading, and the public hearing be set for Tuesday, October 21, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
For clarification, Mayor, who has the second?
I heard Josh.
Figure Judy.
No, I think.
Put together with our forces combined.
He was the one who didn't. No, I know that. I think Judy did.
Okay, so Judy, the second.
Any discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yep.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
For public hearing, do we have another motion concerning the other ordinance? Yes, councilmember Fahy.
I move to approve ordinance number 1905, Series 2025, and ordinance approving the Avista Adventist Hospital GDP Amendment Number Two, first reading, and set the public hearing for what day?
Tuesday, October 21st.
Tuesday, October 21st.
Second.
At 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, let's get a roll call on that.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Mayor Lay.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Onto ordinance number 1906, Series 2025, and ordinance approving the First Amendment to the North Lewisville General Development Plan at 2101 Courtesy Road, first reading to set the public hearing. Do we have a staff report? Please, go ahead. Please, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, Matt Post, Senior Planner, Community Development. This item before you tonight is first reading of the North Louisville General Development Plan Amendment to amend that plan to allow residential uses where they are otherwise not permitted. Quick summary here, I'll again try to keep this brief because we will have a second hearing, I'm sorry, second reading coming up here, but I want to ensure that you all, the similar to the director's response here, get all the information that you need. But the properties located in the planned community zone district and a general development plan is, of course, required to establish the overall framework for those areas. The proposed amendment would permit residential land uses on the property where currently only commercial land uses are permitted. The GDP amendment would also establish new yard and bulk standards for that property that would include things like setbacks, heights, lot coverage, and density limitations that would otherwise not have been available were not for the recent code amendment that was passed here recently. This GDP amendment, just obviously, as I think you all are aware, would not entitle any development on the property, or there's no development plan associated with it. It would, of course, just allow those residential land uses and establish new yard and bulk standards. So the site is at 2101 North Courtesy Road, and is currently occupied by the Louisville boat and RV storage, which allows for the outdoor storage of RVs, boats, and trailers in a secured and fenced facility. The existing general development plan that regulates land uses on the property was originally approved in 1989, and it covered 65 acres on the north side of Louisville. The GDP allowed for land uses that included commercial, office, and mixed-use residential that were spread throughout this entire GDP. You can see the actual original GDP here on this slide, and the extent of the GDP is currently shown in dark gray. Since the approval of this GDP, the majority of it has actually been absorbed into the Takota GDP, the Foundry GDP, and then also the North End GDP as well. So there are just small remnants of this original general development plan that are still remaining and left over. So prior to submitting this general development plan amendment, as I'm sure the council recalls, they did present a concept plan application to the council in October of 2024 to consider this amendment for residential land uses, and then also included a concept plan, and that concept plan included 44 to 48 dwelling units with a mix of townhouses and duplexes at 15 dwelling units per acre. That concept plan is included by the applicant as part of this presentation and as part of this application. I do just want to indicate that the concept plan that they provided in no way binds the applicant to that particular plan, it's simply provided as a visual aid to show what the development would look like at 48 dwelling units per acre. If you recall, I think the council was generally supportive, provided supportive feedback at that concept plan hearing, and the applicant moved forward with this particular application. Into the proposal, so again, this request would be for the First Amendment of the North Louisville GDP, considering that all of the portions of this GDP have been absorbed into other GDPs over the years. This plan would include specific land uses as part of its proposal, and they would include single-family dwellings, townhomes, multifamily dwellings, duplexes, accessory dwelling units, and accessory structures. So again, those land uses would be explicit land uses allowed on this GDP. The applicant is also proposing a maximum of 51 dwelling units on this site, and that would lead to 17.42 dwelling units per acre from a density perspective. It's important to note that that just represents an upper limit on the number of dwelling units that would be eligible on that site. It is not a minimum requirement. The applicant has indicated in their application materials and at the previous concept plan hearing that this GDP amendment is intended to support the development of the site as a permanently affordable deed-restricted middle-income homeownership community. So any application that would come in after this would include a subdivision plat, PUD. This GDP, of course, does not bind the applicant to that affordability requirement, so it is important to note that if the GDP amendment moves forward, it does permit these land uses, but there is no affordability clause that's in this particular amendment application. Looking just quickly at the proposal here, so you can see that access is proposed from Heckla, where there is an existing access easement on the site that actually punches all the way through to Highway 42 and the property to the east, goes all the way out, and that's Divine K-9, right? So there's an access easement that runs all the way through those two properties. No access would be provided from Highway 42. We originally sent out a referral to CDOT. They didn't support additional access in this particular location, so access would be provided directly from Heckla, and then an access point would also be included on Calix Avenue. You can see where the arrow does the 90-degree left and down. On the right side of this particular plan, there would be a vehicular access point punching through to Calix on the south side. The applicant has included a conceptual open space area on this particular plan, just indicating that they will provide community open space, will also apply planned unit development standards when we're reviewing this to ensure that open space is provided. I'm telling you that because there is no minimum open space standard that is actually as part of this GDP. So we ask for the depiction of common open space here, and then again, we'll apply that as part of our PUD review standards, that is part of our review when we actually look at those development plans. Another important piece here that I think the council is aware of is the general development plan actually depicts the future right-of-way dedication for Calix Avenue. If you look at the exhibit here on screen, you'll see the existing portions of Calix, the Calix right-of-way that are built out are displayed in dark blue, while the portion that would be dedicated with this general development plan is shown in green. This is, of course, called for in our transportation master plan. Developments both north and south of this site have dedicated and built out Calix Avenue. I think I'll remind you all again of the concept plan hearing, I think where the council was generally supportive of a condition on that particular site that would support pedestrian and/or bicycle connections in that location, as opposed of the full buildout of the right-of-way. Staff will, however, ask for the full right-of-way dedication with there, which would be 50 feet. It's 50 feet south right now, it's 50 feet to the north, and of course, will continue to advocate for the implementation of the policy, which is for the full buildout of Calix Avenue. But again, the GDP does reflect the right-of-way dedication, and any actual dedication that occurs will happen at the subdivision plat and planned unit development stage. So again, this is just a conceptual depiction that that will be required in accordance with the adopted transportation master plan. The application also includes bulk standards, as mentioned. I removed some of this information here, hoping to be a little more succinct, but I think I'll dive into it a little bit more just with the previous application. So what's proposed here is common with townhome developments, so no maximum lot coverages, zero-foot side setbacks for townhomes, right, that share a wall. And the reason that the applicant is proposing this is because it allows for, again, that home ownership fee, simple subdivision, to occur, so folks actually own their home within the property boundary for these townhome developments. We considered setbacks, so we have a 15-foot front yard setback from the public right-of-way. This would apply to Heckla, 10-foot side setbacks from the public right-of-way. And then in considering the required Calix Avenue dedication, we did work with the applicant to incorporate a five-foot side setback from the Calix Avenue dedication. This is relatively in line with what's in the general area, but again, the orientation of those buildings that would be on the east side of the site where the Calix Avenue dedication would be such that would allow for a five-foot setback from the edge of right-of-way, which would generally be concurrent with the back of a sidewalk if that road is built out. So it allows the applicant to achieve the density that they're looking for, and it also allows the city to get the full dedication of the width of that right-of-way for a potential full buildout in the future. In addition to those setback standards, lot coverage requirements, the applicant is also proposing a height transition zone that would apply to this general development plan. The applicant has requested a 40-foot height maximum here on site, and their indication is that that would support a gabled roof form. And with existing height limitations for single-family homes, the council is aware is 35 feet, so the applicant is essentially asking for a five-foot allowance there, and again, that is to support a gabled roof form. Based on concerns that were raised during the initial concept plan hearing by neighbors to the north, specifically in the lanterns duplexes, again, we worked with the applicant to establish this transition area so that there is a bit of a buffer between those 40-foot heights that you would see and then the areas to the north and the areas to the south. So again, density is proposed here at 17.4 dwelling units per acre with a maximum of 51, and again, that is a maximum, not a minimum. This would just establish a cap. The applicant has indicated that that final unit count would actually be determined by, obviously, final site design and then the subsequent entitlement and review process. Oh, sorry, guys. As you can see, most comparable densities, the most comparable density in the area, rather, would include Steel Ranch Apartments, which are at 24.2 dwelling units per acre, and the Steel Ranch Townhomes, which are built out at nine dwelling units per acre in this particular location. And again, this screen actually shows that concept plan. Sorry, I'm having trouble going through my slides here. Apologize. But this screen, again, is reflective of the concept plan that the applicant actually submitted during that concept plan hearing. This shows 48 dwelling units on this particular site. So I think this is reflective of the type of density and the development pattern that you would generally see were this GDP amendment to be approved and then subsequent development So moving on to some analysis here, I'll try to be kind of brief on this, but again, this is located in the planned community zone district. All GDP amendments will follow that same process for the planned community district when it's originally first established. There's not a lot of review criteria for those, but obviously, the intent is to encourage, preserve, and improve health, safety, and welfare of the community, and then recognize the economic and cultural advantages of an integrated planned community development that provides for various housing types, retail service activities, and then other institutional uses as well. I think the deep dive analysis here occurs with some of our adopted and current comprehensive plans. So the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan currently designates this property as medium-density residential. Medium-density residential in the South Boulder Road Small Area Plan calls for a density between 10 and 20 dwelling units per acre. Again, this property is at 17.4. The current city of the, I'm sorry, the current comprehensive plan, the 2013 comprehensive plan, rather, identifies this property in the Highway 42 urban corridor with an urban neighborhood designation. The urban pattern is described in the comprehensive plan and calls for interconnected street networks, multi-modal transportation opportunities, and then more important, development on smaller parcels with buildings oriented toward the street and an emphasis on pedestrian scale and massing. So again, that would generally relate to higher-density development patterns with that urban pattern. And then the neighborhood designation that follows that identifies preferred development types that, again, that are predominantly residential, that would range from low to high-density residential. So this proposal falls in line with those adopted policies and the preferred residential density types that are there. The comprehensive plan also includes housing policies which further support the density and use types of proposed here. They include Principal NH5, which specifically encourages a mix of housing types and pricing to meet our economic, social, and multi-generational needs, and then Policy NH5.1, provide housing that meets the needs of seniors, empty nesters, disabled individuals, renters, first-time home buyers, so on and so forth. That's in our comprehensive plan. City of Louisville Housing Plan, I think staff find strong support in the housing plan for this particular proposal, and specifically, the report's three primary goals, which include increasing opportunities for residential development in appropriate locations. Of course, this site is currently surrounded by residential development, and it is an underutilized commercial site. The other goal here is to expand and maintain affordable housing for low-to-middle-income households, including the local workforce. Of course, this proposal that's been proposed here is a predominantly deed-restricted middle-income product. The applicant during second reading will be able to present more on this, but the majority of homes would be, again, for-sale homes, so homeownership opportunities between the 80% to 120% AMI range. The applicant is still proposing to meet their full 12% affordability requirement on site, which would be half of those 12%, 12% of those units at 60% of AMI, the other half of those units at 60% to 80%. Interestingly enough, too, the applicant also intends to provide market rate housing here. So this would be a true mixed-income proposal that's been put forward by the applicant. Last goal here is, of course, to diverse housing stock by encouraging mixed-use, mixed-income neighborhoods with a wider range of housing types for various household sizes, incomes, and demographics. So again, staff are of the opinion that this proposal satisfies those policies. There's additional housing plan policies here, and we have a number of actions that are proposed in there, including establishing criteria for zoning changes to support additional development. This would technically be a zoning change, considering offering height bonuses and additional density for projects that do include affordable and mixed-income housing, of course, considering the 17.4 dwelling unit acre count, and the increased height here, staff feel that this action is satisfied, and then, of course, expanding allowances for multifamily housing in underutilized commercial areas, which was already mentioned. So again, in closing here, we, via our analysis, we, staff feels that a number of adopted policies are satisfied with this proposal. Planning Commission heard this application on September 11th and unanimously recommended approval. So with that, we also recommend approval on first reading and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, members of council. Any questions? Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah, I'm just curious, why are they including single-family as an allowed use?
I'm not necessarily sure. I think they wanted to keep their options open for development patterns and types, and I think that's reflective of, you know, what some of their initial communication was, which, you know, they're looking to achieve 51 dwelling units on site. However, they are limited by their available funding via CHAF and other sources specifically for their affordability, so I think they wanted to keep their options open for development types on site.
Okay. And relatedly, is it necessary for them to call out ADUs, or not really?
No, not necessarily. I think that our current ADU ordinance would permit ADUs in this area. That was part of their original application. And interestingly enough, I think they want, again, those would also be deed-restricted units that would have an ADU associated with them, so it's an opportunity for those folks to have an income-generating portion of their property there. So I think we just wanted to be, ensure that that was memorialized in the GDP as well.
And then just one other question, you know, so you can drive on 42 and turn into the Divine K-9 from 42, so I don't quite understand why you wouldn't be able to just continue through.
You can, I don't, you absolutely can. I just, the applicant has indicated that they do not intend to provide a primary access point from Highway 42. So their primary access, as has been considered by staff, is from Heckla and the Calix Avenue connection. The other piece of this, too, that we didn't mention here is that the applicant does also have easement rights on the Divine K-9 site that would allow for drainage and detention in that area, and it may impact the overall location and the full extent of that access easement at some point. We, of course, won't know the final details of that until that comes in for PUD and plat.
Thank you very much.
Can I entertain a motion? Go ahead.
I move to approve the ordinance number 1906, series 2025, passed on first reading, and the public hearing be set for Tuesday, November 18, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Please, let's take a roll call.
Councilmember Hefner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number 190- Yes. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is ordinance number 1907, series 2025, an ordinance adopted by reference to 2024 International Building Code, 2024 International Residential Code, 2024 International Mechanical Code, 2024 International Fuel Tax Code, 2024 International Fire Code, 2024 International Existing Building Code, 2024 International Plumbing Code, 2024 International Property Maintenance Code, 2024 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code. 1997 Uniform Housing Code and the 2024 International Energy Conservation Code. This is on for second, first readings to set the public hearing. Again, no public comment tonight. Director, are you ready with the staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So again, you mentioned all these codes. We are adopting basically the 2024 International Code Series. This would be an update from the 2018 codes and the 2021 Energy Conservation Code that we have on the books right now. So as you know, that we adopt these codes from time to time with local amendments. So we would be adopting the base code by reference, and then we have local amendments that live within the municipal code under Title 15. Staff has worked with our Building Code Board of Appeals, which is our advisory board on the development of building codes to come up with the, the local amendment package, and that's what is in the first reading packet. We did have a discussion direction with city council on August 26th where we looked at a couple of specific policy issues. One was the Energy Conservation Code. As you know, there were a couple of options in front of you, which included the Building Code Board of Appeals' recommended version, which has minimal amendments to the base 2024 code. There's also the Regional Code Cohort option with electric preferred standards. Council had asked for the Building Code Board of Appeals' version to come forward on first reading, so that's what's before you. We also discussed residential fire sprinklers, and council had asked that residential fire sprinklers be included in the code. The one thing that has changed from the discussion direction is related to fire sprinklers and energy code when it comes to accessory dwelling units. So we did put provisions in there that accessory dwelling units would not have to meet the HERS rating. So if you're building a detached accessory dwelling unit or an accessory dwelling unit that is part of an existing home, that you wouldn't have to meet the HERS rating because that's very difficult to do. You would just have to meet a prescriptive code standard for energy efficiency. Same with fire sprinklers. If you are building detached ADU, fire sprinklers wouldn't be required, or if you're incorporating an ADU through a building addition or within an existing building, you wouldn't have to add fire sprinklers. So only a brand-new home that has an attached ADU would you have to add fire sprinklers or meet the HERS rating. So these international codes are updated every three years. We typically adopt them every six years. As I had previously mentioned, this helps provide some flexibility for the development community as they get used to a code, not having to adjust every three years. Adjusting every six years is what we've traditionally done. And just to get into the Energy Conservation Code, if you want to, this is a slide from previous discussions, kind of, you know, what goes into the Building Code Board of Appeals' code package for the energy code. Again, we're basically sticking to the base code, but what the Building Code Board of Appeals and staff is recommending, that we have minimum prescriptive standards that, that will ensure that there's a solid thermal envelope with all new buildings, commercial and residential. And the base code also allows multiple compliance paths. It just doesn't have that electric preferred and some of the strengthening amendments that are in the cohort code. Residential fire sprinklers, again, we did have this when we first adopted the 2018 codes. That was taken out with some amendments that were part of the Marshall Fire rebuild process in consideration of cost. The Louisville Fire Protection District has submitted a letter asking for the residential fire sprinklers to be included in the 24 code adoption. Here's a list of other surrounding jurisdictions that do require residential fire sprinklers. We did provide some cost data as well as some other statistics. This is, you saw this with the discussion direction as well. The residential fire sprinklers do provide for property protection as well as life safety protection, and so there's a recent study that kind of demonstrated some of that. The cost of fire sprinklers, there's a wide range of cost of fire sprinklers that we've seen. We've also gotten some data from the National Association of Home Builders. We have, talking to some local contractors, we were thinking it would be about $1.65 per square foot. That's just the contractor cost. That doesn't include GC costs or additional costs if you're building a new home that probably get incorporated into that. That's the subcontractor cost, so it might be a little bit more than that. One of the things we also found out is that it's typical to get insurance discounts if you have residential fire sprinklers in your home. There have been, there has been some concern about that would actually increase your insurance, and a lot of carriers actually provide discounts if you have fire sprinklers in your home. So your alternatives is to adopt on first reading and set the public hearing. Also, adopt on first reading and direct any desired amendments to the ordinance if you would like, and then certainly you could not adopt the building code as well are your alternatives. Staff's recommending approval as drafted on first reading and setting the public hearing.
Thank you, Director. Do we have any council member questions? Exactly, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing this to us, Director Zakaro. I do have a question, actually, about the residential fire sprinklers. You know, we have heard from some business owners, there's pros and cons, homeowners as well. I'm curious, with the ordinance 1907, if it's possible for us to move the 1907 forward but have the residential fire sprinklers as a separate line item that we would vote on so that it's not part of the rest of the package?
So I think when you get to the second reading hearing, we could, you could direct staff to delete that section of the adoption ordinance or add, add a provision that would delete it out of the building code. So it's actually in the building code by reference. We have made some amendments. So I think it would be easy to direct staff at the second reading to amend that section rather than having a separate vote on that line item.
I guess, okay, because I think the reasoning was, I was hoping that then it would be recorded if there are those of us who are in favor of all of the other changes and not in favor of including this. For example, I, I would find it very appropriate for this to be voluntary if somebody wanted to, wanted to build this way, wanted to spend the additional money, and saw that the value was there. When we're not having it in anything else, we're not even having it in an additional ADU that's external. I don't see why we're doing this in a residential home build. It is in a commercial property. This is a multifamily already, which I can see the higher danger, but it's not here. So I, I was hoping that maybe there was an option that it would be a separate line item instead of having to vote against the entire code for one component of it.
So if council would like, we could be prepared at the second reading to have a, you know, alternative draft or motion to make sure that it's a clean deletion of the requirement if council would like us. I think the draft could still be the draft that's on first reading, but we can come prepared with language so we don't have to address that on the fly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Cooperman?
I had a question, I guess, two questions. So one about the ADUs. I'm just wondering, is, is the requirement, or rather, the, the requirement to not get the HERS rating just to do the prescriptive, is that consistent with just putting an addition onto your home, for instance? Or is that, would, would that sort of be a different requirement?
Right. So if you had an existing home and you were to do a home addition, you would just have to meet the prescriptive code. So it's a similar concept with an ADU that we're proposing because of the difficulties with doing HERS ratings on those small buildings.
Right. Okay, that's fine. And then my other question, in the 2024 International Residential Code, in the, in the staff report, there's a note about an appendix that allows for a wider range of building materials. And I am just curious, are we planning on adopting that appendix? I would probably be interested in doing so.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't have our building official, Mr. Root, here this evening, but I will take note of that question, and if it's okay, we will address that at second reading.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, get a motion.
I move that ordinance number 1907, series 2025, pass on first reading, and the public hearing be set for Monday, November 3, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I, I have one point of discussion, which is, we did in August discuss extensively the, the various policy choices around these building codes, and, and I hope that on second reading, we stay, stay close to the policy direction we've already given staff as to the various choices. That's all.
Any other comment? Okay, let's take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes. We'll look forward to that second reading and the public hearing. Next is ordinance number 1908, series 2025, an ordinance rezoning Lot 1, Block 3, Jefferson Place subdivision from the residential medium-density RM to community commercial CC zones district. First reading to set the public hearing. Again, we're not taking public comment tonight. Do we have a staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Emily Klein-Gibson, Planner 2, with the staff presentation for this first reading. The first reading is for ordinance 1908, series 2025, which is a request to rezone 811 Walnut Street from residential medium-density to commercial community. This property is part of the Jefferson Place subdivision, which was platted in 1880. It's located center along Walnut Street with Lafarge Avenue to the west and Main Street to the east. The building was constructed in 1954, prior to any citywide zoning. The building was originally built for Louisville's Switchboard Operating Center and was placed in a residential zone when citywide zoning was established later in 1962. The building was sold in 1975, and between 1975 and 1978, the property was rezoned to its current residential medium-density zoning, and three special reviews, review use certificates were granted for office space, a salon, and for a pet grooming use. Present-day zoning code clearly defines the SRU review criteria and would not currently allow any of the previously-approved SRUs in this residential medium-density or RM zone district. Because of this, all of the previously-approved SRUs are considered non-conforming and must remain in operation to retain their non-conforming status. Once a non-conforming use ceases operation for at least one year, the use is no longer valid. The property is currently used as an office, and all other approved special review uses have not remained in operation, which means the office use remains the only valid SRU. The request is to rezone the property from RM to commercial community or CC, which is the current zoning of the downtown Louisville area. The requested rezone is so the historically commercial building can be allowed the same commercial land uses as the downtown area. As shown on the zoning map on the screen, the property is on the edge of the CC zone district, which begins on the other side of an existing alley that runs along the eastern property line of the subject property. At this time, the applicant does not anticipate any exterior alterations to the property, and any future exterior alterations or redevelopment would require a PUD or planned unit development and must be approved at public hearings. Staff reviewed all potential new uses that would be permitted on the subject property with the rezone that are currently not permitted in the RM zone. The slide says there's 23 new uses, but there's actually 22 total new uses that would be permitted with a rezone. And that's because the Natural Medicine Healing Center, which was originally included, is actually not a permitted use at this location due to buffering. So out of the 22 new uses, nine would be permitted by right, and the remaining 13 would be permitted as a special review use, which would require additional public hearings before Planning Commission and City Council. Staff finds that all by right uses are fully enclosed within the building and do not include exterior components. And any use that may include an exterior component, such as outdoor dining, would require review and approval as an SRU at public hearings. The municipal code outlines four criteria for rezoning requests, and rezonings should only be considered if at least one of these criteria is met. Staff finds that criteria 2 applies to this request, which states that the area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area. Staff finds that the area zoning has changed over time and has resulted in an underutilized commercial building. The original Switchboard Operating Center use group no longer exists as a land use category, and there are few RM uses that work with the building's existing configuration. Additionally, all previously-approved SRUs beside the office use have expired, so the building no longer qualifies for most of its previous commercial uses. While the rezoning would allow a broader range of commercial uses, it does not permit significant redevelopment or expansion of the site without further public process through either a PUD or an SRU review. The building size and the site's physical boundary limits the scale and intensity of future commercial uses, so staff believes the change represents a reasonable extension of existing downtown zoning rather than a major departure from the current neighborhood character. Staff also find that the rezoning is supported by the comprehensive plan, which is, which encourages the city to support revitalizing existing downtown structures and promoting job creation and increased local revenues. Planning Commission reviewed this proposal at a public hearing on September 25th and recommended approval, and staff also will recommend approval of ordinance 1908, series 2025, and set the public hearing. This concludes the staff presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Right, do we have a motion?
I move that ordinance number 1908, series 2025, pass on first reading and that the public hearing be set for Tuesday, October 21st, 2025, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Take a roll call?
Councilmember Cooperman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We are on to concept plan. 1148 West Dillon Road, the Village Shops at Colony Square. Do we have a staff presentation on this?
Yes. Good evening again, Emily Klein-Gibson.
Will we have a applicant presentation, too?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Tonight's application is a concept plan review for the Village Shops at Colony Square property at 1148 West Dillon Road. As a reminder, the concept plan is an optional process where applicants can receive early, non-binding feedback from city council before submitting a more detailed land use application. No votes will be made, no specific feedback from council is required, and no other boards or commissions have reviewed the proposal. Staff have not completed a thorough analysis but have provided applicable policies for The property at 1148 West Dillon Road is home to the Village Shops at Colony Square Shopping Center and is located near the corner of Dillon Road and McCaslin Boulevard. On the northern side of Dillon Road is the location of the New King Supers, which is the building with the white roof shown on the image on the screen. And the building directly south of the subject property with the brown roof is the Cinnabar Site. The subject property consists of 14 commercial spaces spread among three single-story buildings. It's included in the Village Shops at Colony Square PUD and the Colony Square The property is zoned commercial business and is subject to the Commercial Development Design Standards and Guidelines. The site plan to the left outlines the site layout as it currently is, and the image on the bottom shows the current conditions of the shopping center. The concept plan includes the construction of 24 structurally-independent residential dwelling units above the three existing commercial buildings. The dwellings would be one to two stories in additional height and would be sold under a 99-year ground lease. Existing commercial courtyard space is proposed to be shared with the dwellings, and 24 on-street parking spaces are proposed parking spaces are proposed along the western private road in addition to the existing 121 spaces in the parking lot. Staff have conducted a preliminary analysis of the proposal and identified some key zoning issues for consideration. All permitted uses and bulk standards will be reviewed under the CB or Commercial Business Zone District, since there is no underlying general development plan. This zone permits multi-unit dwellings as a special review use, has a maximum building height of 35 feet, and a minimum lot area of 1,750 square feet per dwelling unit. Bulk standards like lot coverage and setbacks also apply. Any exterior changes to the site would require a PUD amendment, where further staff analysis for compliance with all zoning and design standards would occur. Both the PUD and SRU would require public hearings before Planning Commission and City Council. With the development of any new housing, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance applies, which requires either a minimum of 12% of the total onsite units be designated affordable units or other options to satisfy the inclusionary housing requirement as outlined in the municipal code. In accordance with the recently adopted ordinance 1897, series 2025, and the House Bill 24-1304, parking may be required if the proposal is defined as an adaptive reuse project and if the new dwelling floor area is below 50% of the overall floor area. Further staff analysis is needed with a submittal of a PUD application for definitive parking requirement. Staff have outlined applicable policies in some adopted plans. There are three plans that are outlined for this proposal, starting with the 2013 Comprehensive Plan. Housing policies within the Comprehensive Plan consider housing compatibility with the existing area, supporting commercial centers, and creating a variety of housing types for all community needs. The subject property is also located within the boundaries of the McCaslin Boulevard Small Area Plan, which outlines a vision for the area and is guided by six primary principles that focus on connectivity, gathering spaces, superior design, and developments that meet the economic goals of the city. And the housing plan aims to guide housing policies in Louisville over the next five-plus years and include the three main goals of increasing residential development, expanding access to affordable housing, and diversifying the housing stock. Action items are provided in the plan to help achieve each primary goal, and some applicable action items include reviewing areas for additional residential development and expanding housing types. Although the CB Zone District already supports multifamily residential development as an SRU and no rezoning would be required, residential units would be a new use on this site. And this final slide just lists some guidelines from the municipal code that can be used to guide City Council's discussion for concept plan reviews. Included in the guidelines are applicable review criteria, how a project may conform to existing plans and policies, transportation considerations, neighborhood characteristics, and any other guidance is applicable. And this concludes the staff presentation. The applicant also has a presentation prepared and available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? And then, yeah, Councilmember Cooperman?
Thank you. I'm just curious, when you say structurally independent for the proposed units, does that mean, what does that mean exactly? Would they not even be attached structurally to the existing buildings? They would just be sort of?
Yeah, so I think I'll defer to the applicant to further expand on the structurally independent.
That's fine. And then, you mentioned that the possibility of having parking along that private drive on the west side. What is the current usage of that private drive?
There's currently no parking on the private drive, designated parking.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, can we hear from the applicant? Before you get started, Andy, is that in fact the sort of depiction of the?
Of course.
You know, you're creative, I do know that.
It's historic preservation. As I load up, I'll introduce myself real quick. Andy Johnson with DAJ Design here in Louisville. I will introduce our team here in just a moment. We are absolutely thrilled that we are presenting this to you before 8:00. That was not expected. Okay, again, Andy Johnson, we are really happy to present this. This is a really fun project. I'm joined by David O'Neil, who is representing the Ownership Group, as well as Brin Gray Development, and we're going to start with kind of a combined presentation and then looking forward to doing hopefully a healthy question and answer session at the end, which we will address some of your questions. I'll introduce David real quick, and he'll get started, and we'll?
How does slide to work just hit the? Okay, great. Great. Hello, everybody. My name's David O'Neil, and I'm the founder and CEO of Brin Gray. And I want to tell you a little bit about what we've been up to the last couple decades. We're probably best known for some of the high country housing that we've developed. Probably best known is the Wellington neighborhood. Some of the planners are familiar with that, maybe some on council are familiar with it. And I thought I'd digress and just tell you a little bit, I'll tell you a story about getting Wellington going, just to give you an idea on, you know, the vision we have and some of the things we deal with in trying to realize these visions. We had, it was a long process. We were looking to do a major housing project about 20 years ago in the mountains. And so we found a site just east of Breckenridge, and it had basketball-sized rock piled about 30 feet high. It had a red stream running through it. It had the largest mine in Summit County called the B&amp;B Mine, which was about to be declared a superfund site. It had high tension wires running through it. The EPA was about to sue the owner of the mine, and so I looked at that, being a recovering attorney and a developer, and I thought, perfect, you know, it's a great opportunity. And so we spent about a year doing research on it and talking to stakeholders. We always start with stakeholders, learning from stakeholders. And then we got into it, and I went and met with the planning director, who will go nameless here, and I said to him, listen, we have this vision. And the vision is, picture a three-legged stool, and we can do affordable housing. We can remediate this mine that's about to be a superfund site, okay? And we can create 2,000 acres of open space. And then, being a developer, I spent the next hour kind of going like this, talking about how we could do that, and this and that, and the other thing. And so he, at the end of the hour, looked at his watch and said, you know, that's great, I've got another meeting, and he said, it will never happen. Okay? And so, okay, so, and then we got to work on it. Three years later, I was in the National Building Museum in Washington, DC with the mayor of Breckenridge, Sam Mamula, and the EPA Administrator was giving us the EPA's highest award, the National Award for Smart Growth Achievement. And I'll tell you right now, today, there's 300 homes there in Wellington that house 1,000 locals. There's 2,000 acres of open space, and the mine has been remediated. So, you know, you start with a compelling vision, and everything we do, we start with vision. Oftentimes, developers start with the land use regulations, they figure out, what can we do here? And that's great, but we find that doesn't get us to where we need to go. We start with the vision. And then we go, okay, if we can get you, and if we can get some of these stakeholders, you know, to buy off on the, no, you don't like it?
Not at all.
Okay. You have your moment.
Just speak to us.
You know, if we can get the stakeholders to buy off on the vision, then you go, okay, now we've got something here. And, but if you can't get that initial buy off, then, you know, you don't proceed, really. And then, once you have the buy off, then you go, okay, what do we do in terms of process? And, you know, what do we have to do in terms of land use? So, other projects that we've done that I think are relevant here, we did Peak One Neighborhood, which was 70 units in Frisco, Colorado, was a public-private partnership with the town of Frisco, and that was, we won Housing Colorado's highest award, the Eagle Award for that public-private partnership. Then, we did a Whole Foods anchored center, it's 100,000 square foot center. We've done two of these micro projects in that center. As it turns out, that's the highest transit-oriented development in the world, being at 9,000 feet. And that one was recognized by the Urban Land Institute for an Innovation Award. And then, you may be familiar in Boulder, at West Pearl, there's a building called Eighth and Pearl at 8th Street, where Spruce Confections is, and Canoe Club. And we did that, and that was kind of one of the first in mixed-use project, and we won a Charter Award for that project, which is the Congress of Urbanism's highest award. So, all of these start with a vision, you know, working with the stakeholders, trying to get buy off on that, and then seeing what we can create. So, vision always begins with, you start with a problem in Wellington, you know, you started with, they needed the open space, they had the affordable housing problem, they had the remediation problem, so we, you know, we came up with a vision there. Here, you've got strip malls, which are aging, the tax base is declining, there's some challenge there, and so there's a question about how do you repurpose and reinvigorate strip malls? More significantly, and this is where our thinking was, you've got nationally a 4 million person shortage, 4 million unit shortage of housing, and then locally, well, here's kind of an interesting statistic relative to that, one-third of households in the United States are single-person households. Think about that. And one-third are two-person households. And so when we think of housing, everybody thinks of, you know, the conventional nuclear family, but the truth is, there's a huge number of people that are living alone or living with one other person. Locally, the Boulder needs assessment, you know, would suggest that Louisville's contribution to the need that the county projects is 2,700 units over 10 to 20 years. I won't get into the politics of that, but that's a number that's out there. And then, oh, thank you. Okay. Great. And so, talking about the problems, you've got the strip mall, and so you've got the declining tax base, and then the housing shortage, which I was just talking about. Thank you. And so, what's the solution? Well, one solution might be, it's really, and you asked the question, a revolutionary construction methodology, where instead of typically what you'd go in, you'd close down the building if you're going to add a second floor, and you'd have to deal with the structural elements of the whole building. Here, what we're contemplating is you have the structural members, there are architectural columns on the outside of the building, and then you span over the building, and, thank you, and you do modular on top of the building. And what happens is, now you have a component that's structurally independent of the building, and you then have a symbiotic use of existing utilities. Now, why is that important? Because the reason you have this housing problem is threefold. The first is land cost. There's no land available, and then nobody's excited about greenfield development. The second is, you've got entitlement problem, that the entitlements take a long time to get, and, you know, create a lot of uncertainty and slow things down, you know, local government. And you also have typically NIMBY issues. And then, lastly, you have construction costs. So, theory on this approach is, you're using an asset that's not being used, the air above the center. In terms of the entitlement process, you know, most, a lot of the land planning has already been done when the shopping center was built. Excuse me, and then lastly, you've got the construction and some of the economies from doing, you know, the modular. So, what we do is, we take that concept, and you start with what we've done up in the mountains, which are micro condos, and they range in size from about 350 to 567 square feet. We could show you a virtual video. They're cool little units, they're everything you need and nothing you don't. They each have about 100 square feet of storage, but most significantly, small is beautiful when you start getting an affordability, when you start shrinking the size of the units, and if you can meet the needs, and you have a location like this, that's transit-oriented, where there's everything everybody has there, you know, some cool things start to happen. So, how does that address the problem? You're starting with the buildable land, so you've got the, the land is basically the air over the center. You've got, the hope is, the reason we're starting here, and candidly, I usually do a lot more work with the stakeholders before we get to this stage of the process, but here we are. And the idea is, you know, can we streamline the review process, assuming we get stakeholders on board? And the last is cut construction costs, you know, with this modular approach. So, let's see if I can find this slide. So, we've talked about the housing potential, from the mixed-use potential. We've got good data from the Urban Land Institute and others that by adding a second level and incorporating a mixed use into a strip mall, that you can have a positive impact upon the sales of the businesses that are in the center. You can have a positive impact upon the customer retention. You can have a positive impact on foot traffic. You can have a positive impact upon profit, which incidentally then translates into more sales tax revenue for the jurisdiction. But what's really key to all this, in meeting with some of the stakeholders, you know, in these small retail centers, the strip malls, when you think about it, they're really the last bastion of family-owned small businesses. And so one needs to be really respectful of that, and it's critically important that the existing colonial businesses are on board. You know, if they say, no, this, you know, it's not going to work, okay, you know, then that's something, you know, seriously be considered, and the owners of the property aren't going to be interested in proceeding unless, you know, their tenants, you know, think this makes sense. Some issues that need to be looked at closely are parking. You know, you can't, you can't use up the parking field and take that away from, you know, restaurants or other businesses. We have some thoughts on that. Business disruption, disruption, you know, is this something, we have analogies where the construction takes five days, and so with minimum disruption to the underlying business in terms of setting it on top of these architectural structural members, that needs to be looked at. And then the profitability numbers that we're throwing out here, you know, is it something, if one can get through the disruption, and one can get through the noise and the parking issues, you know, can you make the case that you're going to improve the numbers for these small businesses? So, last week, the notice kind of moved quicker than I thought, so we got the notice, and so we sent out a letter to all of the tenants and suggested at the end of the week that we do a Zoom Town Hall. And we did that. We had a couple people that expressed additional interest, and so I started one-on-one meetings. So, we had some, we had the Town Hall last Thursday, and then we, you know, started the one-on-one meetings, so we need to begin that process. So, that's the quick overview. You know, it's like the vision we've had in other major projects, we think there's a compelling need, we think we have a compelling vision here, and we're here to learn, we're not here to sell you on this idea, we're interested in getting your candid feedback on, you know, what do you like, what don't you like, kind of what strikes you on this? What did I miss?
Let's get it.
Great.
Okay.
Stay up here a second, please.
So, as was mentioned earlier, the zoning doesn't necessarily allow for use by right residential. However, we have a fairly easy pathway through an SRU, similar to the CC zoning district for our downtown areas, and we've had those discussions in the past. This is obviously a very different part of town. It has very unique and, you know, great opportunities that do align with discussions that have been had with the comp plan. I will answer? I will answer the parking question in just a moment, and we may do that at the end of the presentation. In terms of how this wants to move forward, given that this is in an existing commercial and developed area, we have a lot of streamlines that can, that can take place. So, we presented to staff a concept of streamlining the development process itself. Typically, that's going to be a five-to-six-month process. Usually, it lasts a lot longer. In this case, because we have so much of civil drainage, public utilities already in place, we're really affecting a very small part of the site, except for the airspace above the buildings. So, we, we envision a more streamlined process, where Public Works is probably our, our biggest group to work with in this. And it seems like some of the, the other typically more, you know, challenging, or lots of discussions would be had with planning and building are going to be maybe a little bit more streamlined. So, this is a flow chart that we've envisioned. We do see this, you know, wanting to be, you know, underway next year. So, with every concept plan, it's important for us to have a set of questions, which of course is our dialogue for this project with you. And to understand, does this align with what we're, what discussions we have within our community and, and the goals that have been set by council, particularly for housing? So, the questions that we've outlined are somewhat open-ended. Is this concept compelling? Does it merit an expedited land use application process? Especially if it yields an attainable housing or an affordable housing product? Do the goals align with the city housing goals? Does the proposed SRU strategy to create residential, is that something that is, could be supported by the comprehensive plan? And, and the political will to create this type of product in this area? How can we ensure a streamlined entitlement process? Which is always a question for every project. But in particular, this one, speed is everything. As matched with the construction method, the, the planning and, and development process needs to be the same. So, with that, I'd like to open it up to questions from council. I am going to flip to the site plan. If, if I may, Councilmember Cooperman, I'll answer your question about parking first. Currently, along Village Road West, there are some cut-ins right now for existing parking. So, while, if you drive along that road, it's easy to, to think that nothing really happens back there. But there are planned parking spaces. What we are proposing in the blue line that curves around from west to south, is to, is to fully capture the amount of parking that we need to accomplish the housing needs. So, so, yes, there is parking there, but we are planning to create more. That is the, that's the part of the site that gets affected the most. To reiterate what David said, it is, it is critical for the success of this project that the new residential units do not affect the current commercial parking. It is a busy parking lot, is a very popular area. It is fully recognized that Friday, Saturdays, Thursdays, Wednesdays, it, it's a busy place, really popular. And so, it, it's important that we maintain the commercial parking to be designated "commercial." So, just want to make sure that that's very clear. I don't remember your, your other question, but I'm happy to address that if you'd like to restate it.
It was about the structural independence. I mean, I think I understand what's going on.
Okay, I think that we covered that, yeah.
You know, if I can just elaborate on that, you know, in terms of process, my thought, what, there's kind of three stages to this as we're creating this idea. The first is stakeholders, you know. Where are we, you know, is this something that you all are receptive to? Do you like it, you don't like it? If you say, yeah, we're really interested, let's, let's learn more, okay. The second part of the stakeholder equation is, how are the tenants and the existing businesses going to feel about it? What objections do they have? Can we address those objections? And then, we, we figure that out. Assuming we get through the stakeholder hurdle, then the next thing is, in terms of construction processes and costs, you know, we pin that all down and get that nailed. And then, we start the formal land use review process. And then, the third thing is just the market equation in terms of what we think the market, you know, what our pricing would look like and the structure of that. And that would get into the inclusionary zoning and some of the other things relative to you guys. But it's a fairly deliberate, in my mind at least, I'd love to get your feedback, process. Stakeholders first, construction methodology, costs second, you know, and then beginning the entitlement process formally. And then, lastly, getting into the, the market equation and inclusionary zoning, if that's appropriate. Thanks. Council questions? Do you have questions? Councilmember Cooperman?
Sure. I think I just have one at the moment. Maybe, it's just a clarification, maybe. I guess, what's the relationship between, or what relationship do you have with the property owners? I didn't quite understand that.
Yeah, John, so, I collaborated with John Wolf and Tom Lyon for 30 years on all the projects we've been involved in. Everybody's had different roles in it. They've been primarily the architects. They own this project. I'm not a, an investor in it. And so, our approach with them is similar to the approach I laid out with you, and that is, let's see how we do with the stakeholders. Let's see how we do with the construction methodology, the costs. Get a queue up for the entitlement process. Then, with that information in the market equation, then they'll make an assessment, say, yeah, you know, this makes sense, let's do it. Let's not. If, if the, if the answers go, then we would do a joint venture on it, develop it.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I have a question on stakeholders. You just explained your relationship with the owner of the structures. What about the tenants in the structures? Are, have they been talked with, and are they on board?
They're not on board. And they're not, I haven't, we, we sent out, I was a little bit surprised the notice came out, I think, a week ago, Friday. I wasn't aware this was going to be noticed. I thought we'd have a chance to kind of chat with you and get our bearings. So, then, we sent out a letter to all the tenants explaining essentially what I've explained to you. And then, giving an opportunity last Thursday for a Zoom Town Hall. And so, I think we had half a dozen people participate in that. And then, there were two tenants in particular who were very interested. And so, I went and spent about an hour and a half with them Friday. And they can speak for themselves, but I think, you know, essentially, the concerns I heard were business disruption. You know, what's that going to look like? And not much would be tolerated. Noise, what would that look like? And lastly, parking. And then, there's an ancillary one that one needs to go, is this something that, you know, ultimately aids their business in the long term, in terms of the profitability of the business and having, you know, those potential customers upstairs or not?
Okay, so, you've, you've tried to reach out, but have only reached a couple?
Yeah, so, it's, I'd say the process is really, really early in terms of that reach out.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Partum.
I don't know if you have a visual, but I'm confused. I'm picturing, you know, just like space between the top of the building and the bottom of your units. But I don't know if you actually like, once you build it, you kind of connect visually, so it looks like it's all one. But like, I'm kind of confused. It sounds like you won't be using the top of the building as, the current building as, you know, the floor of the, of the new building. But I'm just confused how they end up tying into each other.
It would tie into the ground by structural elements in the front and the back of the existing building with about a 72-foot span. And then, that span then would support the units above there. And so, they would be structurally independent from the building underneath it. And then, there's some things that, you know, if this looks like it's going to go, we can get into construction details. If not, then we won't, you know, I don't want to kind of lay out all the details of it at this juncture. But we've given that quite a bit of thought. What's interesting about it, though, is the symbiotic use of the existing utilities. The town, I hate to put words in somebody else's mouth, so. But the town engineer had a great insight that I had heard before, the city engineer, and that was, I mean, essentially, all the utility connections could happen in the existing utility room of the shopping center. And so, you don't, you know, you're not going to be digging up parking lots. You're not going to be doing utility extensions. All the drainage has already been addressed. The landscape's addressed. And there's a huge amount of land planning that's already been done, it's out there. And so, structurally independent, but then symbiotically leverage off the existing utilities. And if that makes sense and it works, there's huge cost savings there that then translates into providing, you know, housing.
Yeah, I think, I think I get all that. I'm just, again, confused on the visual of how they tie in, not mechanically, not structurally, but visually how they tie in. Because the image you're providing for me is a floating building above another building. That's the image I have in my head, is the current roof line. I can see it. And five feet higher, there's a container above the building. And that's the visual I have right now. So, if that's accurate, great. Or if they're going to somehow visually connect.
Excuse me for just like, can you get to the microphone, Carrie? Your voice is, is quiet and it's harder to hear.
You know, in the entitlement process, we get into the nuts and bolts and have schematics. I can just tell you, if you look at our website, or Wolf Lyon's website, you'll see everything we've done for 30 years. We're very concerned with the aesthetic impact. And so, from when this is completed, you know, it would be, you know, complete aesthetic. It would add value. To my personal taste, when we did the base camp, I don't know if you're familiar with the, the Whole Foods up in Frisco, if you've ever seen that. But as we developed that shopping center, we had a 20,000-square-foot building, actually, it was 10,000-square-foot building, that was one level. And we just felt that we needed to throw on the second level, because that second level creates place. And so, we, you know, did somersaults to make the economics work on that. So, by virtue of just adding, if nothing else happens, by virtue of adding a second level and doing that aesthetically, you're going to create a sense of place. It's just, you know, the way these things work. So, to answer your question directly, aesthetically, absolutely, it's got to look great. And it's got to look like one building. And it's something that, in the entitlement process, you know, we get into it with great detail. Is that, would you add anything to that?
So, this is a concept plan, right? It would be great if I could show you architecture, right? So, I'm going to direct you to the lower-left image on the slide, if you can see that. So, the goal, the goal with the building is to have a complete building. It is a mixed-use building with commercial on the lower level, residential on the top. They are structurally independent. However, it would look like one building. I think, I think the, the thing that I might be throwing you, Councilmember Dickinson, is that we're, we're going into a great amount of detail around the process of construction, rather than talking about the vision. And, and possibly, we could have provided better example images. However, the goal is that we end up with one building. Now, it's a little out of the box. It's not intended to look like stacked Legos. It's intended to look, you know, like a mixed-use project. So, so, I think the, I think the important thing in highlighting the construction methods is to emphasize the speed of construction, which is intended to limit the amount of disruption on construction for that development during the time of construction. Does that make sense?
One of the things that might be helpful, I mean, I just did this on my own screen, because that image is very small, is to increase the size of it, just so people can see what that, that one picture looks like.
Take an image like this.
Go to the base camp shop.
Just with a control plus? Oh, yeah, that's true. Yeah, it may be, may be difficult to do it in that presentation mode. Well, that, that's okay. I was just sort of, it's, it's all right. We should, we, we need to kind of move along on, on this. I, other council member have, have questions?
I'd like to hear some public comment.
We will. Any, I want to make sure we have, if there are questions, we get them answered, right? Okay. Doesn't look like, okay. Yes, next is public comment. So, if you guys will step back, if we have public comment. Anybody who's interested in making a public comment, make sure you provide a card to the clerk, and she'll call your name one at a time. Make sure you identify yourself and whether you're a Louisville resident.
Forgive me if I mispronounce this, Kurt Larson?
It's Kurt, Kurt Leinbach.
There you go.
And forgive me, I haven't spoken in front of people in like 30 years, so.
Take your time.
And I'm pooling my time with the people that own Colony Square Therapeutic Massage. So, I think I get an extra few minutes or something like that. My name is Kurt Leinbach, and I'm sorry, I'm going to read off of this. It's something I wrote. I have operated Rabbit Hole Recreation Services and Escape Room Facility in this complex for the last seven years. I also own or lease another unit that we run Jubencha out of, which is like a kind of a long, firm murder mystery game. I have a third unit that we have a fabrication shop in that we create new escape rooms with. And we're looking at leasing what used to be Mother Tucker's and putting in two more escape rooms, dedicated Jubencha studio and a Japanese listening bar in the front of it. I was going to go off of this. There's just, there's so many things wrong with this, I don't even know where to get started. The proposal that they are showing you guys, say, 24 units, it's actually 72. It's 24 on each building. We are at, as a matter of fact, somebody sent me pictures of our complex just a few minutes ago while this meeting's going. The parking lot is at capacity already. I have no earthly idea where they think they're going to find another 75 to 100 parking spots if we have 75 or 72 new units built. You saw what the current buildings look like. And you saw the bottom corner picture of what this supposedly is going to look like. And the idea that they could do that in some amount of time that wouldn't just unbelievably disrupt our businesses for months, if not longer. I think he said five days, which is just ludicrous. Anyway, I, I don't know how my businesses could survive this. And I, I think that I understand that this is a, is a pet project of theirs. I think that they're using this as a test bed because they'd like to patent it, so that they can roll it out to other places. I don't want to be the guinea pig for this. And if they do this middle building, which is what this thing is about, the 1148 building, which we have our fabrication shop and our Jubencha studio in, if it doesn't go well, then what? You have like this Frankenstein building that's in the middle of our complex, because they can't do the other two? I just, I, I don't know what else to say to you guys. I hope that you can see how goofy this thing is. And, and I, I don't know. But I'm at your mercy, and I guess that's all I have to say, so.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Looks like we have somebody online, too.
Fallon Voorhees Matthews.
Hello. My name is Fallon Voorhees Matthews. I live in Sterling Heights on Dyer Road. I'm a small business owner here in Louisville and a nurse out of Vista. And I want to thank the mayor for his comments earlier this evening in consideration of nurses here in Louisville. I understand the city's goal of adding housing, but this proposal to build 24 residential units above the shopping center on Weston Road isn't appropriate for this neighborhood, especially for a community that's still recovering from the Marshall Fire. This EU housing project near- This EU housing project nearby has already been approved, and a new King Supers marketplace will soon go in across the street. That's a huge amount of added traffic for an area with only one main street light for access. Even now, this corridor backs up daily, and we all remember how difficult evacuations were during the fire. Adding more people without improving infrastructure creates real safety concerns. Parking is already a problem, the shopping letter, shopping center's lot is full most days, and the planned so-called additional on-street parking is already used by shoppers. Taking those spaces away will hurt the small businesses that depend on customer access. On top of that, months of construction will disrupt those same businesses, many of which are still trying to recover. The city's own document calls this concept plan, meaning no binding details yet, but before this moves forward, we need full studies on traffic, infrastructure, and evacuation safety, plus transparency, transparency on who is developing and owning this project. The mention of a 99-year ground lease raises real questions about accountability. And while this is being described as affordable housing, only about three of the 24 units would qualify, and it sounds like maybe my numbers are incorrect, given what the gentleman said before me. Even those could be replaced by a fee instead of actual affordable homes. That's token compliance, not meaningful affordability. It won't solve housing needs, it will just push property values and taxes even higher, which many of us can't afford post-fire. Finally, the city's small area plan doesn't designate this parcel for residential use, converting commercial space into housing without full impact review undermines both our local economy and the neighborhood's character. I urge the council to pause this proposal until these issues are addressed, especially the fire safety, traffic and parking, business impact, and true affordability. We are not against growth, we're asking for responsible planning that supports recovery and keeps this neighborhood safe and sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is David Proter.
Thanks for having me. I wasn't actually planning on speaking. Oh, yeah?
Please just state your name and whether you're a Louisville resident.
Yeah, my name is David Proter. I am a Louisville resident, I live over near the rec center. Wasn't really planning on saying anything, but this has been a very interesting conversation with a lot of great opinions coming out. I just want to say that I did grad school at CU, I lived in Boulder for a long time. I don't know exactly what this development is going to look like when it's finished, but the idea of having housing in that area is exactly the kind of thing that I was looking for when I was a grad student. I know we're already getting more CU housing there, which is great, but the idea of there being a place where I could live, take a bus to work, go get a beer at a local place, walk over and, you know, do my grocery shopping, that sounds awesome to me, personally. I've gotten to live in one mixed-use kind of community way back in the day when I was younger, in Sydney, Australia, that was basically my favorite place I've ever lived. So this, to me, sounds like a pretty cool opportunity for a new, you know, a new vibe to grow in that part of Louisville. I totally, I love that shopping center and a lot of the shops there, and I would hate to see that area disturbed for a long period of time, anything that would harm those miss, those business owners. But I just want to say, I feel like, at this early stage, it'd be really nice to hear more and a more, you know, a, more of the concept map actually like fully fleshed out before things got dismissed out of hand, which is sort of, kind of what I'm getting right now in the community. So, I think that this sounds like a really exciting thing, I hope that we can hear more about it in the future. And that's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No, no additional ones? All right. Those were helpful comments. I guess, one, one thing I think is appropriate to do is to let the applicant, you know, provide some additional information in response to some of the comments, the public comments, and then we'll go to council discussion.
So, when you're a disruptor, as I am, and you're launching new ideas, you'll learn, you know, you'll learn. So I've learned a lot here tonight, it's been fantastic. The first thing is, I think one needs a schematic, you need to know what the hell we're talking about. So, you know, if I had to start over, I'd, we'd do that. And in the entitlement process, you would see a schematic. The second thing is, I think it's really important when dealing with the community and stakeholders, is to first talk about what are our objectives here? Let's get really clear on what our objectives are here. And so one can say, from a small business perspective, you know, not disrupting the business is a key objective. Parking is a key objective. Long-term profitability is a key objective. So there's other objectives, you identify those objectives, and then you go, okay, and then you go, from the community perspective, housing is a key objective. And so where we've had success over the years is, you identify those objectives, and you get to the point where everybody goes, that's right, we all agree, this is what we're trying to accomplish. And this is, this is where we do a great job, we go, okay, this works then. You know, we've got to, and I could show you a video, where in Brooklyn, they assembled a four-story building in a day, if you can believe that, and all of the assembly happened off-site. And so you're very organized, you come, I'm not saying we get it done in a day, but I think one could demonstrate, you could really do it. And this is, this is really a disrupting idea, this is a new idea. And so, just to kind of summarize, I think, you know, I'd love to have some enthusiasm and say, okay, we're up for new ideas, show me. A, and B, let's do a better job of identifying what everybody's objectives are, what we're trying to accomplish here, and then can we figure out a way that we reconcile all those objectives? And we do that before we really get into the entitlement process in a serious way, it seems to me. Is that responsive, Mayor, or is there anything else that maybe I should address?
It's entirely up to you about how you respond to those. I appreciate your, your thoughts.
Okay, great, but thank you very much, we appreciate it. We learned so much from your feedback, and from Kurt's feedback, and the other stakeholders, so thank you very much.
Thanks. I just want to do a time check. We are at 8:37. I'm, I am, want to interrupt this particular presentation to take a break, but if you're okay with having a discussion at 8:37, that's fine, okay. Looks like I'm getting some nods. Yes, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a really interesting concept, and we might, I'm getting a better understanding of it as we get through this, which is great. You know, my, my first thought was, looking at the packet, thinking like, oh, okay, like, my brain was like, demo, rebuild, a whole new concept, and, and my thought was like, oh, man, you know, Hana and Parma and Rabbit Hole, all these places that I love so much. So it's, it's certainly an interesting, a very compelling vision to say, which, you know, clearly is not being, you know, believed right now by, by Kurt, right? Yep. So, you know, I think that is the, the challenge, right, is, is, you know, is it, is it believable? Is it possible to, you know, to minimize the impact on these businesses and bring something really cool? But generally speaking, yeah, like, we're looking for more residential. What I like about these units potentially is that they are potentially very, very small, which does help with affordability. It does create potentially an issue of high density, creates, you know, more people and more cars and things like that, so it comes with mixed bag there, but I like the idea, we don't have a lot of, you know, micro apartments, so there's something enticing about that. There's something enticing about, you know, a short construction period, I understand that the idea of building off-site and then putting it together on-site quickly, as a, as a concept generally that is happening around the world. I have seen videos of things being built in a day, and you're like, oh my God, the time lapse of, it's like, well, it wasn't built there, it was just, it was put together there. And so I think it's interesting, definitely a lot more to learn. Nice thing about this concept plan review, right, there's, you know, we don't know a whole lot. I would, I would say that I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to it on the front end, I'm not saying, don't ever come back. There's a lot of details that need to be ironed out, and understanding, you know, from staff, how they see the process going, and, and, and speed and things like that. But yeah, I think, you know, I find, I find it to be very interesting, I don't know if there are other thoughts or comments, but that's all I have for now.
Councilmember Heffner, and then Councilmember Kurt, and then Councilmember Vicki.
Yeah, thanks. I largely agree, I think I would even go so far to say, as in, well, seven years across planning, commission, and council, this is the most interesting land use application I have seen. It feels to me like a little mini Hudson Yards, like building something over something else. And I, I, I love the concept, I, for all the reasons that the Mayor Protem just said. I think it's a great location for it. I, I think there's sort of, you know, there, there's detail, I think there's details to be ironed out, there's other stuff to be ironed out, too. And I think there's like a lot, a lot of paths for this, right? Like there's, I can imagine this coming back with, you know, unified opposition from the tenants in the, in the current shopping center, and it being a very difficult sell. I can imagine it coming back with unified support from the tenants, and it being an easy yes. And I, I do think the identification of the task before you was correct, that you have to get the stakeholders on board as one of the early steps, and I'm glad that's your job and not ours. But, you know, with, with that big caveat, I think the, the project itself, if it, you know, if you can figure out the, the way to make it work, is, is really interesting, and certainly, once it's there and it parks itself, it's hard for me to imagine that, that there's a lot of downsides. I think it's the question of, how do you get it there, and how do you get enough parking that you're not creating undue pressure on the existing parking lot?
Thank you. I don't want to repeat everything that Councilmember Dickinson and Heffner have said. I completely agree, I think mine, I came into this thinking, this looks really interesting. I understood the concept, actually, of stabilizing this and building it above an original, of an existing structure, and that's pretty neat. I've seen the modular construction already, I have neighbors who rebuilt post-Marshall Fire, and it is, you'll be surprised at how quick it does go up. I mean, I think, I don't think that they're, they may be overestimating with five days, but I, I would agree. That was my number one concern, was where are the business owners, not the landowner, but the business owners? Where are they in this, getting their support? And if it really can be something that's done to minimize the disruption to, like a full week, then I, I think, make sure that that's the way that it happens. And I think that, you know, working with them, whether that's through financial compensation or what have you, to make it happen. It, it does seem like a very cool project, I like the idea, it's only, and I want to confirm, actually, Andy, it is only 24 units that you're proposing? Okay, so it's basically one, like each unit, it's not like two separate rows, so you're doubling the number, okay. So for 24 units, I think the traffic light as it is, correct me if I'm wrong, could probably handle 24 units of cars going, adding to the intersection? If, I mean, and I understand the full assessment hasn't been done yet, Emily, for the development, but it isn't like it's double that, it is only 24 units. And CU still has to come to us and figure out how they're going to be proposing handling the traffic flow out of their development, correct?
Yeah, so it's 24 units, and when the CU development comes in, there would be initial, additional analysis on traffic as well.
Okay. So, I would also say I agree with the comments that the parking lot for the commercial must be exclusively for the commercial businesses, it could not be available for us. And you guys have already addressed that that was part of your understanding going into this, so I appreciated that sensitivity. I don't know, I thought it, I thought it looked really cool, I was thinking, I proposed it, I have a 26-year-old niece, and I actually sent a couple of snippets to her, and she was like, oh, I was so moved there. So I, I wanted to say, like, it was interesting to me, it was interesting to find out that the exact kind of, you know, market, you know, like a young professional would be interested in this, they love the idea of transit, they love the idea actually of having something like a really cool escape room right there, they're not even walking to and from, and an amazing restaurant like Parma. I know I, the Parma owner is not here, and that is, you know, a week of disruptive business would be devastating to his, his income, and we've heard him talk at other business things. And Kurt, thank you for coming, I appreciate, this is my first time meeting you, and I am incredibly sensitive to your concerns, and I'm hoping that you'll be able to continue some conversation, just to see if there are opportunities and a path forward, and to all of you. But as a council member, I think that consideration, but it is really fun, so thanks for bringing it to us, and keep working on it.
I essentially agree with what's already been said. My only other concern that was, what was brought up online is transportation in and out of the development, especially in the case of an evacuation for some kind of emergency. If there could be an increase in the street behind the units, behind the, the retail, so that they could come out and either, either go east to McCaslin or go north before they went east to McCaslin, that would help. But I also have a son that would love to buy one of these, so, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm very intrigued by this idea. You know, as, as a city, we have a number of goals in relation to housing, transit, and I think these goals are going to require some really creative infill solutions in order to achieve them, given the limited amount of land that's left to develop in our area. And a solution such as this, I'm really excited to see it come across our desk, especially in a location that's so close to transit and walkable to, you know, grocery site as well. I think, you know, the, the applicants certainly have their work cut out for them to ensure that, you know, stakeholder engagement continues in a productive manner. And I have no doubt, as someone who is, you know, has years of experience, as I think you called yourself a disruptor, you will navigate that appropriately. But I'm looking forward to seeing some, some future iterations of this concept cross our desk, that contain additional details from that engagement, and maybe some visualizations as well for our community, as they continue to decide whether this is a good fit for the, the goals and desires that we've, we've set forth in our community documents.
Good. Other comments? Yes, Councilmember Cooperman?
I will just second the interests and concerns that we've heard from the rest of my council members.
I, yeah, I'm not going to repeat the, the comments. I think one of the things that's really nice about this concept plan process is that it, it brings a not fully formed idea before us, without the necessity of gargantuan investments in order to both put the public on notice a little bit about an idea, with the hope, and especially, it's nice to see stakeholders here, that there's going to be further input, and that is the commitment that I've heard tonight from the applicant. But one of the things I just wanted to throw out, just because it wasn't in the staff, it was referred to the staff report, there was a link to it in the staff report, but just as a little bit of a framework, and I'll apologize in advance for reading, but I think it's important to understand what the SRU criteria are going to be, now that's one piece of it. And I don't want to get bogged down in this, and frankly, I don't know that anybody needs to respond to this, but it's just something to think about, and for the stakeholders, too. Because this is one thing that would have to be dealt with before this is going to ever be approved. So this is, the following criteria should be considered by the planning commission and the city council reviewing applications for special review use under this chapter. This is section 17.40, .100 of our ordinances. And there are five pieces to this. One, that the proposed use development, use or development is consistent in all respects with the spirit and intent of the comprehensive plan and of this chapter, and that it would not be contrary to the general welfare and economic prosperity of the city or the immediate neighborhood. Two, that such use development will lend economic stability compatible with the character of any surrounding established areas. Three, that the use or development is adequate for internal efficiency of the proposal concerning the function of residence, recreation, public access, safety, and other factors, including storm drainage facilities, sewer and water grades, dust control, and other factors directly related to public health inconvenience. Four, the external effects of the proposal are controlled considering compatibility of land use, movement, or congestion of traffic, services, including the arrangement of signs, lighting devices as to prevent the occurrence of nuisances, landscaping and other similar features to prevent littering or accumulation of trash, together with other factors deemed to affect public health, safety, welfare, and convenience. And five, that an adequate amount and proper location of pedestrian walks, malls, and landscaped spaces to prevent pedestrian use of vehicular ways and parking spaces, and to separate pedestrian walks, malls, and public transportation loading places from genuine, general vehicular circulation facilities. And there are a whole additional set of criteria that discuss size and location of the site, internal traffic circulation, adjoining access to public streets, location and the amount of off-street parking, fencing, screening, and then landscape operations, including open space, building bulk and location, signs and lighting, and noise, vibration, air pollution, and other influences. I have little doubt that reading through those, that, that's a, that's a hefty lift, so, you know, I'm encouraging, I, I think this is a very creative way of kind of adaptive reuse of airspace. And maybe, maybe it's going to work, and maybe it's not. The applicant just said that it's going to be difficult for a project like this to get off the ground if, if there's huge opposition from the local, either the landowner or the landlord or tenants. So, you know, all that said, I think it's, I think it's really interesting. So, we, it sounds like from, you know, stepping from my own comments to the consensus, it sounds like there's a lot of support for this concept, knowing that there are challenges that have been mentioned already about parking and all the other things, and a little bit of confusion as to exactly how it's going to look, and how long it's going to take, and what kind of disruption, and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, it seems like something that the council is interested in seeing more of, if, given all this presentation, the applicant is interested in putting additional money, time, and effort into it, and discussion with your stakeholders, which I think is really going to be important. Anything to add to that from council? Right. I think that's probably what we need to provide, hopefully that's going to be a little bit of, again, not something that you can rely on in terms of property rights and all of that kind of stuff, but it gives you a sense of where council is, and we should best luck. All right, next matter is City Attorney's Report.
I have no report, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Identification of Future Agenda Items. Is there anyone who has a future agenda item that they want to put on? Okay. I would throw out that next week we are going to unveil a kind of change in our process of how we do the identification of future agenda items, we're going to talk a little bit more specifically about what's coming up and the timing of that, and it's an experiment, but one that I think is proposed by Councilmember Heffner, and I think others are really excited about it, and, yes.
I just wanted to see, it's not specifically for future agenda items, I just wanted to, one last reminder, that Monday, because we won't be meeting again, is the opportunity at Fire Station Number One, which is the one located on Main Street, for residents or any of us to meet the three candidates for the new fire chief that's coming in, and I think that is a really excellent opportunity for anybody who's engaged in the Fire Protection District or worried about fire safety, to take the time and please participate and give comment back. Thank you. Oh, it's 5 to 7 PM, thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, do we have a motion adjourned?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good, thank you so much, and thanks for sticking around till 8:50, without a break.